Row call.
Mayor Conley Ball?
Here.
Vice Mayor Bill Foster?
Here.
Alderman John Thug?
Here.
Alderman Freddie Gray?
Here.
Alderwoman Kathy Hope?
Here.
Alderman Kenny Morgan?
Here.
City Attorney Terry Hurst. City Administrator James Fincham?
Here.
City Attorney Terry Hurst advised me that he'll be a little late, but he will be coming around 6 o'clock or so. And on behalf of my family, I would like to thank this great community for the outpouring of sympathy shown to my family and I during the passing of my father. I feel like a very fortunate person to be able to have my father as long as I did, and still to have my mother living. You know, I just thank God every day for the great times that we had together. And I lost my best friend, but I know where he's at, and it's up to me to try to get there to be with him. But I really appreciate this community. It was beyond what words can really say. Thank you. Approval of the minutes of the previous meeting session on April the 15th, 2014. You've had an opportunity to look at those. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Any discussion or corrections?
Conley?
Yes.
Can I make a suggestion that everybody speak into the microphone? So because as you see, we have a full house so everybody can hear.
Yes, okay. I can get much closer than that. Here we go. Okay, we had a motion and we had a second to approve the minutes. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes, no. I hear none. There's no proclamations this evening on item four. Item five, communications from interim city administrator James Fincham.
Thank you, Mayor. The first thing I have is to talk about the banner hanging that we talked about at the last meeting. I've had communication from Sherri out at NUB, and she said that the story or the information, I guess is a better term, that the lady had that called about the hanging of the banner was inadvertently told to her that it was a miscommunication within their system out there to the person that told her they no longer hung banners, that they had not changed their policies, and they hate that that happened, that that miscommunication got out there, but they had not changed their policy on hanging banners. And what she suggested was that we work together on hanging them, and I told her I didn't have a problem with it. But having said that, we do have a problem, but not with them. What we have run into, we've already, and we've only hung one banner so far, and we've already ran into problems. The banner that we hang after the last, before the last meeting when we talked about it, wasn't up but a few days and a storm come through and tore it halfway down, and we had the, our bucket truck was torn up, we had, it was out of service. We had to get the fire department to come down 3:00 in the morning and take the banner down. So it did turn into kind of an issue. What I've encountered now is I have two local organizations, community service organizations, they want to hang a banner at the same time. One came in like the one day before the other one, and both of them are good organizations. And Tim has come up with a suggestion that I think is a viable option and alternative. And that is that we don't hang banners downtown, that we put them over across from Walgreens on the memorial lot over there. We used to do that. They got out of hand because everybody got to take them over there, but I think if, Tim has suggested and volunteered that if we so choose, if you all so choose and think it's a good idea, that we put those banners over there on that corner. That way, like both of these banners is wanting to go up right now, they could both go up, and there's actually more traffic that goes by that corner than comes through downtown. You know, if you do a traffic count, it's going to be much larger, much more publicized there. And so I would like to try that as, if that's okay with you all, as opposed to hanging these banners downtown and trying to block the traffic, and then when the wind brings them down, have them to come down in the middle of the night in a storm and try to get them down, and call people in and all this kind of thing. Absolutely want to publicize these events and help these groups, but I think this is a better alternative as opposed to hanging these things across the road. But I want to see what you all thought.
I think it would be good. You've got the traffic stopping right there, they'd have time to look it over.
And we can put, I mean, we could put multiples out there, and it solves the problem I've got right now where I'm going to have to pick one over the other. And the only way I knew to do that is first come, first served. And then, of course, that knocks, you know, they missed by like a day. The one come in one day and the other one come in the next day. And so, I mean, that would be the only way I know to pick and choose, and by that, one gets left out. And this way, nobody gets left out.
Would there be a limit of time, a timeframe that they could put it up and then it would have to be removed?
Well, Relay for Life and Tim can correct me if I'm wrong, I think they want Thursday to stay up a month. Now, that's up to y'all. I mean, that's something that if you want us to do, we could draw up something to look at. You know, this is a new deal for us, and we've not done it in the past, and so we, you know, we're kind of flying by the seat of our pants on it. There is no regulations, or we haven't done it, and we're just trying to, you know, deal with it as it comes. And we've had three just bam, 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 you know, ever since we found, you know, we took it over. And so, I mean, that's something we could look at, how long we leave it up. Like I say, Tim's better equipped to address that than I am as far as, he's the one mows around them, weed eats around them, and all that kind of stuff. Would you, would you have any opinion on how long that you'd want them to stay there?
Well, you know, when you look at, even when we do an activity, a 10 to 14 day range is what you like to try to get the information out so that people can digest it. So that 10 to 14 days would be my suggestion.
Well, most of them have a date on when they're having it ready to end, so.
Right.
I mean, the day it ends, it already comes down.
Sure, but I mean, I think he's talking about how far in advance you put it up.
Well, we need to make this form a motion, and let go into Tim's department, he handles it, and y'all can work out the details, and we just put it in Tim's department. And if that's okay with you Tim? Do you want me to add the motion?
Well, I don't think you have to, I don't think. So if that's everybody's consensus, I don't think you have to vote that way, but I match up to y'all.
Do y'all want to vote, or just is anybody opposed to it?
Well, you know, I said before that why it was even brought up to us in the first place, when the banner was hung on the Newport Plankton building, and the other one was built, was hung on the other building, and the city didn't have anything to do with that. That is a great idea, best idea of yet.
Well, you know, Tim brought it to me, and I thought it was a good idea. I think it's a great alternative for us because now it's not out in traffic. It's easier to get to if something, if it does blow loose, it's not blowing down on passing vehicles, and our guys can get to it. I mean, all they got to do is walk over and get to it instead of trying to get up some way to get elevated up into air to get to it and blocking traffic and taking, having a risk of falling or, you know, anything, especially when you get into bad weather.
Tim, it sounds like a consensus that you're in charge of that.
I have one question. What's going to be the procedure for somebody signing up? Obviously, you've put throughout this some thought into this, so.
They're, you know, one of the things is, it's like the blood drives, you know, they always contact you ahead of time. As long as the information's out there at City Hall, the business handling will work with them, we can kindly manage to get it up, but after the event, we'll get it in. So procedure is, Terry may have some suggestions based upon what we can put up, so everybody have to help us with it with what we can put up at the moment.
Terry had mentioned that he hadn't looked into it, but there could have been some questions about the last banner we put up as far as the topic. And it was the National Day of Prayer, and of course, we all support prayer, but you know how that there's always those of an opposing view that say, getting into separation of church and state and all that kind of stuff. You know, I don't think it's a big deal from my perspective, but there's those out there that look for, you know, avenues to make issues out of things like that. And Terry had just said that we needed, he was just advising me that if in the future we needed to maybe evaluate if they got into some kind of a religious thing, that we might want to evaluate that and just, you know, take a little extra look at it to make sure we weren't getting into something that would just turn into a hot button issue. And so I think that's what Tim's talking about as far, because, you know, you just, in this day and time, you have all this crazy stuff that everybody sues over, and that's something that I have to worry about routinely, and I know sometimes people think we're being too nitpicky about it, but, I mean, people want to sue you for everything anymore. And I think it's ridiculous, that's something I hate about the times we live in, but nevertheless, when it's your responsibility to worry about it, you got to worry about it.
Last question I got. What's a number? I mean, you're going to have 10 out there at a time, or is there a limit?
What Mark and I were just talking about, what we can devise as far as pops, with maybe some brackets that we can tie to them quick, permanent poles there. All these banners are about the same, and so they can be installed, and taken down too. But we've got to look at what we want to use as a permanent pole to tie those instead of going down and using the line posts that you have to beat them down every time. We thought we might get something permanent there, but the avenue that we want to go.
What I say, how many? Like, I mean, you're going to allow 10 banners to live there?
We're talking triangles, you know, so you're looking at two at a time, and you've got on the memorial tree park side, not the Presbyterian graveyard side, but we have that as a flow too that we can use too.
I think, I think if we started turning into an ordeal, we'd have to revisit. Thank you. Okay, thank you. The next thing to make you aware and the public as well, one thing that we've been trying to do is update the website and get a lot of our, get our charter ordinances and those kinds of things on there. We constantly get requests, public records requests for those things, and they're very thick, and, you know, and it's very, you know, there's a lot, there's a lot of stuff there when folks come in and want those things, and of course, we have to make them available to anybody. And checking around, a lot of the other cities put those things on their websites, and so we are, Regina is working on that, she's already got the charter and a lot of the ordinances, the personnel policy on there. We started putting the minutes of the meeting on there, and we're going to continuously be updating that and adding things on there to make sure that the public has access to this information to where that we don't have to look it up and make copies and that kind of stuff for them. And so just to make y'all aware that we're doing that, and to make the public aware that we're doing that, and that's just to try to help expedite that process and have everything be out there in the open where everybody can have access to it that wants access to. And anything that y'all can think of, that you all might want on there, just let us know, and we'll look at trying to integrate that in also. Along that same line, some things we can't put, obviously, we can't put everything we've got online. I mean, that's just not feasible to do, there's too much of it. And we do have folks come in that want large amounts of info copied. Now, we found where some years back, the council had voted to charge 50 cents per copy for anything going out here, and we've not been charging that. We've just been letting people, just making them copies and letting them have it. Now, we've had some discussion because when you start getting into this and you're having to make a lot of copies, it does start running out of time, and we do pay, what is it, 10 cents a copy roughly, that we pay for a copy. And so there is a cost to us for doing that. And what the law says is you can charge people to be reimbursed for your time and cost of the paper plus the time of the person doing it, and I think that's how they came up with a 50 cent number. But we have not been doing that. And I just wanted to kind of get y'all's thoughts on that. Now, my predecessor had put in that everybody could have a free, free copy, one free copy of everything. I have, we've redone that form and put on our, you know, a little bit more information about who's getting stuff and what they're wanting and that kind of thing, so we're clear exactly on what they're wanting to make sure we get to them, what it is they've asked for. What are y'all's thoughts on the charge, not charge, the 50 cents that was approved by prior council? I just want to try to get some guidance from you on that, because that's something we've not been doing, even though it had been approved by council prior, it has not been being done. And so I was going to get some input from y'all on that.
Does the police department charge for accident reports?
Yeah, they, $5. It's $5 a copy down there for an accident report, which is multiple pages, but it's a $5 charge. But do y'all, y'all think that what Tina and I had talked about was maybe giving them like up to 20 copies free, and then after that, start charging or something? Because a lot of people just want one copy, you know, they just need one copy of a receipt, or they need one copy of something, and that's, and that's not a problem. It's easy to find one copy and make one copy and give it to them, but when they start getting into hundreds of copies and that kind of thing, and you got to dig and hunt and spend a lot of time finding them, and like I say, it's 10 cents a copy is what we pay. And so, you know, I think if we get into, somebody wanting a large amount, I think we've got to charge them, it's my opinion. But that's why I'm trying to get all this information on the website, because then they have access to it, and they don't even have to come to us. We're, you know, trying to solve that problem, you know, get ahead of it. But what, I mean, what do y'all think about that? 20, if it's up to 20 pages, it's free, and after that, we implement the fee that was approved by prior council? Does that sound fair to y'all?
I think it will be fair.
Is that what you want to do?
Yeah, that's what I'd like to do, yes.
So do we need the motion to change it?
Well, you've got, it's already on the book.
It's already there.
Up to 20 pages?
Yeah, that part's not. Yeah, it just says we'll charge 50 cents a copy, that's what it says. And that way, you're going to accommodate 90% of the people that want something, it's going to be free.
Amendment to the, it's already on the book. I'll make amendment to the resolution, you say 20?
Yes, sir.
Okay, 20, and after that, we charge. How much are you going to charge that?
It'd be the 50 cents, that's what's on the book. Now, y'all have the authority to change that, but that's what's on the book.
That's fine. I'll say it.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? What if you've got the same person comes one day and gets 20 free copies, and then comes back the next day?
Well, I mean, that'd just be a loophole in the law, that's all I know.
I mean, that's, that could happen.
There you go, giving people ideas, see, they might not have thought it.
Well, no, they didn't thought of that, they're a lot smarter than me.
Well, I, but, well, that'd just be a, I mean, I don't, I mean, that'd just kind of be a loophole.
I think, I think a little common sense goes a long way if the same person keeps coming in every day.
We might have to call their hand on it if they start doing it. But that's a valid point. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes, no. Hear none.
Thank you. The next thing I have is on charitable organizations, the documents we've requested from their audit budget for the 501(c)(3) organizations that requested funding for this year are on file and available for y'all's review if y'all want to see them. We handed out a copy up there of a request that came in, it's dated May 1st, but my understanding is it came in Monday, for Helen Ross McNabb wanting $1,500 donation added to the budget for next year. It didn't come in in time to make it into, I mean, we got it Monday, so it's not on the agenda, because it's too late to get it on the agenda, and it's not in the budget. So I just wanted to make you aware of that, because we are approving the budget tonight, or we're going to discuss it, hopefully we're going to approve it, and that is not in there. And we only, we only got this Monday. So just to make you aware of that, when we get to the budget, yeah, that's just a heads up to be thinking about that when we get to the budget. But that did come in from them, and you have copies there, but we got it, we got it Monday. On the grant that we got on the recycled oil, we got no bids in that we put out for, and so we're going to have to advertise again. We're calling vendors that provide those kinds of equipment and services and try to get at least one bid in by the next meeting. So that was supposed to be, we were supposed to have bids tonight on that, but we received no bids on it. All right, that's all I have, thank you.
Any questions for James, anyone? Thank you, James. Item six, there's no appointments to any boards. Item seven, Tanner Preservation Alliance, anyone here to report from them, update or anything?
I'd be happy to take any questions, both councils have any questions. No real changes, just want to ask you.
Okay, anyone have any questions? Row. Under item eight, old business, item A is consideration of second reading of ordinance 2014-03, amending the beer ordinance.
And Mayor, excuse me, I'll read the caption of that ordinance into the record. It's ordinance number 2013-03, and ordinance amending beer ordinance 2007-19, enabling the city recorder to issue a temporary beer permits and giving the beer board permission to issue special events permits.
Have any questions or discussion, or do we have a motion to approve on the second reading?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Got a second, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes, no. I hear none. Under new business, item A, consideration of insurance option for city employees.
Make the motion, we accept option two.
Option two, motion to accept option two. Do we have a second to that motion?
I'll say it.
Any discussion?
We've got two other options also that we offer as alternatives to the employees, which they can select from along with the one that people buy.
Okay.
Just want to make that part of the minutes.
All right.
That's the one they pay for on their own?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, any other discussion? Should we roll call that, since that's going to be spending money, but I mean, it's in the budget, and the budget will be approved without any?
I don't think you do roll call that. Now, Terry could tell you better than me, but I don't.
It's going to be roll called when we do the budget?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes, no. I hear none. Item B is consideration of first reading of ordinance 2014-04, City of Newport Annual Budget for the fiscal year 2014-2015.
I'll make the motion to accept.
I'll say it.
Got a motion and a second to accept this budget on the first reading?
Mayor, I'll read the caption of that ordinance into the record. It's ordinance number 2014-04, an ordinance for the City of Newport, Tennessee, adopting the annual budget for the City of Newport and the annual budget for the Newport Grammar School and tax rate for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2014, and ending June 30, 2015.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second, any other discussion?
Who made the motion?
I did.
Mayor, I might, one thing, and I was about to forget, because I, we just, Tina and I discussed this right before the meeting, and I apologize, I was, I didn't write it down in my notes, and I was about to get all of that. The grammar school audit, okay. It was our, it was our, I guess, misunderstanding, but that the grammar school pays for their own audit. And what we have found is, and which discussions that Tina was having with them today, they informed us they do not pay for their audit, we pay for it. And that was 20,000, 20, 19 something, that we put in, it's in the budget, but we had it being refunded from them. They have said they're not going to refund that, that we pay it, but from what we find, we started paying it 2012. That's when we found that we started paying that. So the, if that revenue is not going to come back from them, then that's going to change that number by $20,000 as far as our cost. The numbers, the revenue number changes, the expenditure number does not, because it's the same, I mean, we're going to spend the same amount of money, but we're not going to be reimbursed that $20,000 from the grammar school for the audit, so.
Why can't they not pay for their own audit?
Well, from what we can find, they did till 2012, and what Julia had told me, the former finance director, was that Scott agreed to start paying their portion because we weren't getting our budget at the time, and it was causing them problems, so. So I don't, I don't, you know, we just become aware of that today.
If they could pay it before 20,000, they can pay it again. I don't think it should be our burden, taxpayers' burden.
So, I mean, and digging through, in the time that we had for her to go back, of course, you got to, you know, I know y'all are aware and remember the mess that we inherited down here records wise. And so Tina is trying, you know, she tried to track down, she just didn't have time to go back and look at checks and invoices and all that. What she did was just look at when the numbers changed for us. We were paying 40, 48 prior to 2012, and then in 2012, it jumped $20,000. So we're kind of assuming here, and I know you're not supposed to do that, but the common denominator is that, you know, it jumped $20,000 in 2012, so, and that's the amount, and it's been that since, and so.
Do we have a copy of their budget?
Not yet, we're still waiting.
On last year? Was it budgeted in their budget last year?
We haven't had time to do any digging, we just got this.
You know, if it's prorated out of ours?
It was paid just as a lump.
Separately.
It was all, we just paid one big lump sum, paid it off. Yeah. So that is going to alter that number by $20,000 if we don't get that revenue back from them. So I was, I was about, it's about to get by me and forget it, but that was something we've become aware of today.
Is that a law that?
Ah, we're still digging, we just, we've not had time to adequately research it, but I don't want it, I don't want it to hold up our budget, but I just want you to be aware that if they won't give us that back, that's going to change that revenue number by $20,000.
And that's something we can look at before the second reading?
Yes, sir.
We need to.
Because we just, we got hit with it today, and, you know, where do you go with that?
You know, this is another department where the tail's wagging the dog.
So, you know, I, one thing that we did, Mr. Morgan asked the question earlier, maybe before the meeting, and one thing that we did do in the budget, and we talked about it last year that we were trying to get it done, is that under the line items for the grammar school, we've tried to get everything in there that's an actual expense, you know, and there was things we were paying, just like this audit, that we weren't, that really wasn't showing in the budget. They were in lump sum payments that we were making on stuff, and that was the grammar school's bill was lumped in with ours, and we were paying it. And so some of that we get back, but I, you know, we put it everything under the grammar school, because he had asked, why did that, did we increase what we're spending to them, which is a valid question, because that number went up in the budget. But no, we're spending the same amount, it just wasn't showing under them. And I wanted you all to be able to see exactly what you're spending at the grammar school. And so, but that, you know, that's something we're going to dig into and see, are we going to get that 20,000 back, because if not, that will reduce the revenue by $20,000.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the first reading. Any other discussion? Let's do a row call, please.
Alderman John Thug?
Yes.
Alderman Kenny Morgan?
Yes.
Alderman Freddie Gray?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kathy Hope?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bill Foster?
Yes.
Thank you. Item C is consideration of request of right of way from Jefferson-Cott Utility District.
Mayor, the utility has approached us about coming across our property down at the main fire hall, and what they are asking for is a right of way to extend a gas line across there that will there that will increase capacity and make it available for more customers and promote development of growth with the gas. And Terry and I consulted with him, and he said that routinely what we do on these kinds of things is we, we just, we grant the request, because we want to promote growth and progress, yes. Thank you.
Do we have a motion?
That's not going to hinder you anymore. I'll make a motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll say.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed is no. I hear none. Item D is discussion of amending ordinance 2006-15 prohibiting vending and peddling in the city park.
One thing that we have found on that, Mayor, and it's in the, it's in your packet, is when you go to, we've given you a copy of the charter, and that is actually in the charter. That's not just a regulation. So, in order to change that, you would have to change, make a charter change.
Okay.
So, because when you go over towards the back of your packet there, in that section, it's highlighted prohibited unlawful activities, merchandising, advertising, and signs, and it goes on, vending and peddling in the park. And so, that is in the charter, that would require a charter change.
Does anybody want to change that?
We can get it changed from here on in.
Can you do it now?
No. Any discussion on that?
Will you let the ice cream man know?
He's here.
Is he here?
Yeah, he's totally here.
He's here. Do you understand what he's saying?
No, I couldn't hear what he said, I can't hear that good.
The charter says that there cannot be any selling in the park, basically.
Yes.
And that's a charter, that's approved by the legislature that the city council, previous city council sent to Nashville to be approved, so it's in the charter that you cannot do that, at the city park.
So, what that means is that absolutely no way you're going to change it?
Well, you can until after the first of the year. A charter change has to be done by the legislature, and so, the legislature will not be back in session until January. They can't, here, they can vote, ask the charter, that the legislature change it, but only the legislature can change it, and so, they can't change it. They can recommend that it be changed, but only the legislature can change a charter, and the legislature will not be back in session until January.
Well, can I get you to recommend a change?
That'll be something that the council will discuss at a later date. When it gets closer to time, if there's any charter changes, then the council will have a workshop that'll be public, and then we'll look at anything that council thinks might need to be changed in the charter, along with that.
Okay. All right, I agree with that stuff.
Okay.
Do you mind if I'm?
No, be fine, thank you.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Item E is consideration of resolution 2014-06, changing the name of Lisiga Boulevard to Kimwood Drive. What's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed is no. I hear none. Item F is consideration of donation to Senior Citizens Home Assistance Services.
I think Carlene's here, I saw her, yeah, back there. The Senior Citizens Home Assistance Service put in a request for $1,000 to be added into the budget as a donation, and then there's also, which is not mentioned on the agenda, but there's a second one, uh, through Ethera, through Carlene, for the Cock County Office on Aging and Senior Citizens for $25,000 request. And so, that's what that is. But now, she's here, could, I'm sure could explain what that would be used for, whatever. It's spelled out somewhat in your letters, but.
Quest on time.
They had it, yeah, they had it. It was in, yeah. It's something we really should have discussed last week, but it kind of got caught up in Tina's paperwork on her desk, I think.
With the budget having been made, is there any room for allocation?
Well, I mean, it's just like anything, it's just, you know, we're drawing a little bit on the fund balance already this year, we don't have a balanced budget to begin with. So, anything, any more that you add to the budget draws down the fund balance further. So, that's, you know, we're not, we're not operating with a balanced budget this year.
Listening to Frank last week, and listening to everything he said after doing the audit, I don't know where we would find the money in the budget to do it.
Well, they're currently, I mean, they're like, say, they're, you'd just be drawing down the fund balance further is what you'd be doing.
But that's not it.
Of course, our budget doesn't have any tax increase in it, so.
No, sir.
No.
Is this something that we could look at with the other requests that we've got from?
You can, you can look at those, you can entertain those at any time.
So, I mean, if you've got two or three, you'd probably be better to look at those requests all at the same time, what do you think?
Let's see how well our money's going.
Yeah.
I'm thinking we need to be conservative.
If we've got to have money, then we can always go back.
I mean, what if something catastrophic happened in the city, and I think you've got to, in considering the budget, you've got to consider things will happen.
Does anybody have a suggestion or a motion or anything on these, or, as I suggested, put it with the request that we got from Helen Ross McNabb? Y'all just want to put it with that? Anybody opposed to doing that, or got other suggestion? Any other discussion on item F? Item G, discussion of Glenn Ray, former general manager, Newport Utilities, I think we had indicated at the workshop to allow him to speak. Glenn?
I'd like to make a suggestion, if you'd consider it. We've kind of got an item here toe-nailed in between my discussion and the comments from citizens, which I believe are going to be about the same topics. Would it be okay to go ahead and get item number 10 discussed first, then I could follow up right after that, because I think it would flow, my discussion and the comments from the citizens' discussion could flow a little bit better?
I don't have a problem with that. That'd be fine, I'll take care of that. Okay, item 10, consideration of bids for engineering services for safe routes to school phase two.
Tim?
Tim?
There will be Campbell and Associates is who is, who we would recommend for that bid process, they're going to build our Greenway and our Park Club program. So, Evan Sanders is who does our grants and our grants and construction, that's who we would recommend do our engineering work, because they also have some projects that we're doing with the city at this time.
And they are on the approved list that the state.
Right. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll say.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Kenny Morgan?
Yes.
Alderman Freddie Gray?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kathy Hope?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bill Cottler?
Yes.
Thank you. Tim?
Sir?
A question, would you want to tell what's going on down here at Wild Greens, or is that a secret? A surprise?
We were approached by K-Cot County Beautiful this time last year, that they had some grant monies, and they also had some grant monies from Lowe's and Associates. So, we contacted the state about what the right-of-ways are, and what they had feelings toward that properties. We also contacted Newport Utilities, not Newport Utilities, Newport Housing Authority, and had a meeting with Charlie and said, this is what KCCB would like to do. And so, in the process, we were able to work with Tim, and, of course, they put their project out to bid for their works, their services, and it ended up that a local contractor, Terry Stewart, got the job with them, and of course, it's not costing us anything to do that project as far as the city goes. All of it's through KCCB. We, they're, we're trying to put a sidewalk to connect all the way over from the Cosby Highway to Broadway, and of course, we're tying it into Giles Hill right there, is that Freeman?
Wado.
Wado, that's Wado. And so, we've tied it into it right now, but there's going to be a short sidewalk, four planter boxes, and a gazebo for that side of the Christmas tree. So, with the plans, with the next grant cycle with KCCB, is to put it on the Cosby Highway side, so that we would have two gazebos and sidewalk that connects from the Cosby Highway over to Wado.
As opposed to having people have to come all the way around that corner when they're walking, because you have a lot of people that exercise and walk, and they, they have to kind of cut that corner or cut across, and that way we'll have a sidewalk all the way up to that property, that they can walk across that, and get out there and that, opposed to that dangerous area.
Thank you, Tim. Okay, Glenn.
Hey, I want to thank the council for letting me speak tonight, and I want to thank everybody that's here tonight, that's listening, that's here to hear the discussion about my job at Newport Utilities. I'm not here to find fault with anybody, because that's not me, I'm not a fault finder or anybody that blames people for anything, I'm just here to try to reflect on the facts that occurred on the day that I was asked to resign, and let everybody be the judge on how you perceive that. Council and the board's got a tough job, it's not easy. I know that there's lots of things that you guys have to decide to do, that's not in the viewed well by the public, but I know that somebody has to do it, so I respect, I respect that. But what I want to do is to try to figure out how to, how to put together some sort of win-win outcome with this. The main reason I'm speaking is because I'd like to have my job back, that's the, that's the main reason. I worked at Newport Utilities for 11 months and two weeks. In the 11 months and two weeks that I was there, I had not one complaint from the board about my job. Then on, then on March 31st, a meeting was scheduled with me at 2:00 in the afternoon by Kenny, and Kenny showed up with Steve Hudson, a police officer, and Connie Frisby, our human resources manager, and sat in my conference room to speak to me. He handed me a folder and asked me to look at the folder. Opened the folder, and I looked at it, and as soon as I read the first page on the, in the folder, I knew exactly what it was. It was a, it was a performance evaluation that was negative on every point in the entire performance evaluation, which to me is virtually impossible, to be, to be doing that bad of a job for 11 months and two weeks and somebody not say something about it. As far as I know, unless somebody's got some documentation, or some emails, or some memos, or some text messages, or something, I've not been told anything about doing a poor About a week before March 31st, I provided my admin assistant with a yearly list of major accomplishments that had been done by the utility company, not just me, but all the departments, every department. I listed everything that had been done that I would call, in some cases, world-class accomplishments by the utility company. I provided that to my admin assistant, I asked her to send a copy and make a hard copy for Kenny. If that list was here tonight, and I could show it to you, that, that list for Newport Utilities is world-class. It puts, it puts what's been accomplished in the last year as a, as a top-notch effort by a utility company. In that, in that folder that I was given was three things. That evaluation, which was negative from beginning to end, and it was page after page of things left blank. No input from me, no preparation by me, no preparation by anybody, just almost a pencil-whipped form where everything was rated unacceptable. No comments of any significance, a few words here and there, but mostly left blank. I looked at Kenny, because for 11 months and two weeks, I thought everything was okay. I stayed in contact with Kenny by text, by email, by telephone. On my cellphone tonight, I have 150 text messages to Kenny Morgan. I have 100 emails to Kenny. I mean, I didn't know how else to stay in contact and get any kind of input except through the board chair. Also in that folder was a form, not a letter, but a form that amounted to about seven words. I hereby resign my position. Sign it, date it. That's all it was. Along with that was a form offering a severance if I would agree to never address this issue I turned down the severance, because I, there's no way I would do that, because everybody needs to hear about this. I did ask to have at least a minute to go into my office and think this through, and get some counsel from someone, somebody who had some employment law experience, and I had a couple of people I could have talked to. I wasn't allowed to leave the conference room. Steve Hudson was planted at the door, and I couldn't get out of the room. I couldn't get to my cellphone, I couldn't get to my computer. I was held hostage in the conference room. I couldn't do anything. So, because of that, I was faced with one of two things, based on what I was told by Kenny, either sign the resignation form, and you will be allowed to collect your personal belongings, or I'm going to terminate you, and Steve Hudson's going to escort you off the property. That was, that was what I was told, was my options. To avoid the embarrassment of the employees in that building, which I dearly love, and myself, and my family, and the town, I signed the form, which allowed me to collect my personal belongings. Took me five and a half hours to unpack my office, because I was not prepared for what had just happened. I honestly thought that Kenny was coming to see me to give me an attaboy. You've stuck it out for a year, there's been nothing but good things happen, take on the next year, put a plan together, and follow the plan. That's what I thought. I was completely blindsided by what happened. And to be honest with you, I'm still in shock. I still haven't figured out what has gone wrong. I haven't been given any information over the last year about a problem with my job that has affected Newport Utilities. I haven't been given any information. No emails, no memos, no letters, no text messages about, here's a problem that you have created, and we need you to fix it. I have none. Now, if there are any out there, I'm not aware of them. I keep, I kept copies of all my emails, my meeting minutes, I couldn't get to any of those. I still can't get to my computer. The only thing that I have in the way of documentation is I do have, I do have about 40 emails that are on my smartphone, and that's 40 of about 4,000, by the way, that were on my computer, and I do have all my text messages. And like I said, I have 150 to Kenny alone. And there's the phone, you can look at the phone, you can go through the text messages, there's not one text message in the 150 that addresses anything like this or has any negative theme to it. I've attended every board meeting in the 11 months that I was there, every staff meeting, every employee meeting, every safety training meeting, every apprentice review meeting, went to the plant locations regularly, regularly. Sometimes, first thing. Sometimes first thing in the morning, sometimes last thing in the evening, sometimes on the weekends. Made field location visits to all the crews. Attended all the TVA meetings, the TVPPA meetings, T-DOT meetings, the T-DEC meetings in Nashville six times in the 11 months I've been there, working to make Newport Utilities a better place. Majority of my stuff in Nashville, the effort there was to help get water and sewer to Chestnut Hill for Bush Brothers and Ball. That revenue from Bush and Ball would be well-deserved and well-needed by Newport Utilities. We're talking about a large user of water and wastewater. I went and met with Paul Decks, the Commissioner of Highways with T-DOT, twice, helping get T-DOT to resequence the construction of new Highway 411 so that our utilities could follow the construction right into Chestnut Hill. And at the last meeting down there, he agreed to do that. That's all on behalf of Newport Utilities. That's not Glenn Ray. And then I've attended, I've attended regional meetings and local meetings, and every time I've attended a meeting, it's all been to promote Newport Utilities. As far as I know, I've not, I've not had any negative issues regarding Glenn Ray representing That's just the facts. That's not, that's not finding fault with anyone or casting stones, that's just the, the true facts of what has occurred. That's about all I have to say. I think it's that simple. I thank y'all for coming. Who all is here to hear this tonight? I think on that note, I will sit down.
Thank you, Glenn. Kenny, you requested to speak.
Before we have an ongoing meeting, I have a statement that is prepared by the attorney, from the attorney, and I don't have my glasses, so bear with me, please. Can you hear me now?
No.
I don't know that it stretches any further. As the governing body for Newport Utilities, the Newport Utility Board has the responsibility and authority to make decisions affecting the utility, including personnel-related decisions. This responsibility requires the NU Board to make difficult decisions. However, these decisions are made in public meeting with ample opportunity for public input and discussion. The recent decision-making The recent decision-making process involving the former general manager followed that same process and procedure, with two public workshops being conducted prior to Mr. Ray voluntarily resigning his position. As NU Board members, we all stand by and support the process which was followed in this situation. This process did not involve the city council, nor should it now. As NU Board members, we cannot now publicly discuss these personnel-related issues. Ample opportunity was previously provided for public discussion. NU Board members cannot answer questions or discuss this decision-making process as it involves personnel issues which are inappropriate for further public discussion at this time. Kindness regards, Kelly A. Campbell, Regional Manager of Wimberly &amp; Lawson.
Okay, any, any other, please, please. I, I know how everybody feels, but I have to keep order in this meeting, okay? Any discussion from any other council members?
Would any, would any of you all entertain the idea of revisiting this and, and get together in a meeting situation?
Yes, ma'am, I would.
Mayor, I read the statement.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
All right. Next, Roger Gribble has asked to speak. All citizens' comments are limited to five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for giving me this opportunity to speak. As the mayor said, my name's Roger Gribble. I'm a resident of the City of Newport. I was born here, left in 1966 to go away to college. Upon graduating from college, I couldn't find a job here, so I went elsewhere, as many of the graduates of this county has to do. I spent the majority of my time in the federal government, and some 10 years operating in a small business. I returned to Newport in 1992, and I served as a financial consultant since returning here, working mainly outside the city of Newport. During this 21-year period, or 22-year period, I spent my free time working with various local churches, the Alzheimer's of Tennessee, and other nonprofit organizations. I regret to say I have been one of those people of conscience that have remained silent during those 20 years I've been in Newport. This action of threatening, bullying, harassing the manager of a major entity within this community is wrong. I know Glenn Ray and have known him for a number of years, and I know him to be a Christian man, and I believe what he tells me happened that day. What did this man do that was so egregious that on March 31st, we take a policeman, the head of the utility department, and the director of human resources to the conference room, call him in, and give him this unbelievable performance appraisal? There's eight pages in that appraisal. Two of them are signature pages, the rest of the pages are blank. They have no comments. That wouldn't pass muster for any performance appraisal I know of, much less a performance appraisal of a man that's head of one of our major organizations, chairman of the Newport Director of the Newport Utilities, I'm sorry. And to deny him the right to make a telephone call, the right to seek counsel, the right to leave the room, folks, that amounts to kidnapping. I don't care whether the police is doing it or whether Kenny Morgan did. To not permit someone to leave an enclosed room, how would you feel if that happened to you? Many of y'all are members of the utility company, but that's what happened to this man. That's ludicrous. It's horrible. I don't care who did it. I don't care what the reason it was. This is a public utility. Look at the accomplishments of the Newport Utilities the past 12 months. Kenny got a copy of them. Did y'all get copies of them? I don't know. You have three representatives on that board from this committee, three, and you don't even get a copy or any feedback when they're going to fire the head of the band. You don't get any feedback regarding what happened during the past year. You don't get his side of the story on what went on at Newport Utilities. Talk to the people that are directors of these apartments. I haven't talked to one director that had anything derogatory to say about Glenn Ray, not one. The citizens of Newport have formed a committee of concerned citizens, and we're circulating a petition around the city. We currently have over 1,000 names on that petition. That petition is respectfully at request in the council of the city of Newport or the directors of the Newport Utility to reinstate W. Glenn Ray to the position of general manager of the Newport Utilities. Why? He's done nothing to be removed. I spent a lot of time in Washington, a lot of time in the regional office, in Atlanta, Georgia, and I've seen garbage like this before. It made me sick then, it makes me sick now. As I said, we have, as of today, approximately 1,000 signatures on that name of people that live in this city. We're hoping by the end of the month that we have 2,000, and we'll continue right on that until Glenn Ray is reinstated to this position. Folks, y'all have the authority to do something about it. If you have to remove the whole board and start over again, let's do it. But I tell you, every person that was on that board signed that appraisal, every one of them. I don't know who, who, I don't know who per party, and I don't guess it really matters. But folks, I don't think the citizens of Newport are going to stand any longer for this type of thing. You know, some of the people that signed these petitions are members that are sitting right here.
I did.
Kathy Holt has asked time and time again, and she's been a lone voice crying in the wilderness, to get to the bottom of this, to get some answers, to do something about And I've had two letters from this group of attorneys that represent the board from, and I tell you, there's nothing that should prevent the Newport Utilities Board from telling each one of y'all why Glenn Ray was fired. It can't be for this appraisal that was done. There has to be something else going on here. It's the same thing that happens over and over again, and I'm going to do everything that I can, and I hope y'all do too, to stop this and see that never happen. We've got cities all around us who are growing by leaps and bounds. They're growing because they're looking and they're planning for their future, and they don't stand for this stuff going on and on and on. And I want to see Newport grow and thrive, but as long as we're doing these types of things, it's not going to happen. Charlene told me before I left to use my inside voice, and I'm sorry I haven't. I don't mean any disrespect to this board or to Newport Utilities, but folks, something wrong here, and we need to correct it whatever it takes. Freddie, I thank you. Kathy, I thank you. I thank you to those members of this council that have stood up and signed this position, petition, and said that the Newport Utilities should reinstate Glenn Ray.
Mike, you had asked me.
I wanted also, and I can't say anything probably that hadn't already been said, and I think y'all know how I feel already, if you don't, then something's a matter. And I, I do, I've been on the utility board before, and I made decisions sometime it wasn't very popular with people, that some people don't speak to me today because of it, but the only thing that I can say, I can look in the mirror and say that what the decisions I made, I tried to find out both sides of it, listened to every side of it, then made an informed decision. I tried very hard, and with that, and people liked that or not, that's the best I could do, and that's the best I think sometimes y'all can do too. So I just don't feel like that, I'm not saying that I'm right or wrong, I'm not saying the utility board's right or wrong, I'm not saying Mr. Ray's right or wrong, but I am saying the way this process was handed down is very wrong. And something else, you know, it said that everybody signed off, now I've talked to some, some of the utility board members myself, I hadn't talked to all of them, either I've talked to them or somebody else has talked to them, and I'm not saying all of them, I'm saying the majority of them. And the majority of them has said that they did sign the performance appraisal, but that's all they signed. They still say, "We didn't know that he was going to be fired, we didn't know it was going to be handled this way." And there's a little discrepancy on what Mr. Morgan says, and Kenny's a good friend of mine, I hope he's always be a friend of mine, I coast him in ball, I hope he's always a friend of mine. Discrepancy on what's being told by him and what's being told by the board members, you know, was everybody aware of what's going on, or everybody wasn't aware of what's going on, you know? If everybody wasn't, that's when I think the biggest reason is that somebody ought to rethink this and try to make an informed decision. There's just too many questions. I could sit down with you, and I don't need to, but sit down and ask a lot of questions. You know, like I say, I've got a copy of the performance appraisal here, and, and everybody, on every department head that I've talked to, I haven't talked to all of them, but somebody has talked to all of them, and didn't have the first complaint coming from Mr. Ray about his performance. You know, it said, "He lets you do your job, he lets you, didn't have anything to say to it unless it was something positive." And so, you know, that's not where the problem's coming from, and that's a question too that's been asked, well, what is the problem? Why did it come about all of a sudden? That's something that, that a lot of people's asking, why for 11 months and 14 days, then why all of a sudden we got a problem? But all these things have been said. The only thing that I would like to do, that I hope that everybody learns a little something in this, and I hope they take this into consideration, and I hope in their heart that they will try to, the only thing that I've ever asked is to give Mr. Ray a chance to speak his part, and I think he did tonight, and I think he did a good job with it. I would like to, for the whole, the city and the town and everybody to get together, stick together, have a good utilities, try to do what they think is best from their heart, and whatever that is, I just think we can beat what we're doing, and I appreciate you letting me talk.
Any other citizen comments?
I'm Ken Johnson. I've lived here for 30 years. I raised my family here. We came here 30 years ago, we did not know one soul in Newport, 30 years ago, didn't know a soul here. I have been warmly received by everyone in Newport. I love everyone in Newport. I'm here tonight because I love Newport. I practiced medicine here for 30 years and retired last year for health issues, and I have no intention of leaving Cock County or Newport because I love this place. This is my home. My children grew up here and were raised here. For that reason, I chose to For that reason, I chose to run for the county school board, and I appreciate the confidence that the people have given to me to be an elected official, and I take that seriously with honor and with humility. I also am proud of the fact that I practiced medicine for 30 years, and in that process, being a private businessman, try to do things fairly, and honestly, and above board. Being a private businessman as well as a physician requires hiring people, and when, as a businessman, you hire someone, you interview them, you look at their credentials, you look at their abilities, you look at their references. You don't take it lightly when you hire someone, at least I, I haven't, and in order to be a private businessman in, in America, you have to, you have to make good decisions because the people you hire represent you to the public. And I always did performance evaluations every year with my employees, and we would sit down in a civil manner and discuss it. And in the 30 years I was in practice, I was very fortunate that I had wonderful employees, and many of you can attest to that. And I treated them fairly, and they gave me an honest day's work. If there was a problem, we discussed it, and we resolved it. At the end of the day, I was the boss and I had to make the decision, and I, and I'm happy to say, by doing things that way for 30 years, I never had a resolution that wasn't resolve, a problem that wasn't resolved by sitting down and talking about it. As a elected government official, as a school board member, one thing that I have learned in 12 years on the school board, representing the 6th District, under two different directors who have been very good directors, and working with school board members who I respect to the fullest, and that we got along together. At the end of the day, we all agreed that we would never agree, but at the end of the day, we would be friends, and that the consensus we would go forth with. But one thing I've learned in being an elected public official that is extremely important I am proud to be an elected public official. I'm proud to say I'm a citizen in Newport and Cock County. I think we have unlimited potential. I am personal friends with the members of the Newport Utility Board. Bill and Kenny, I consider you personal friends. Jason, I've considered you a personal friend. My other personal friend that, that I've been friends with for 30 years is on the board is Charlie Benson, and you'll have to tell me who the fifth person is. I really don't know Don, but you're the fifth. So, I am personal friends with you guys, and I, and I'm not getting up here, I don't want, I don't wanna do anything to damage our friendship. I love you guys. I do. Charlie's not here for me to look him in the face, but I do, I love him. But I'm concerned. One thing I always learned when I was a doctor, when someone in a family tells me about their loved one, and they say, I'm concerned, then I perked up and listened. And if I had maybe made a decision medically on them that didn't jive with the way they came back the next day, and a family member tells me, I'm concerned, I pay attention. So, I'm telling, I'm just saying to you folks on the board, and the ones that are here can hear it in absentia, that I'm concerned.
Any other citizens' comments? As I mentioned at the workshop, I grew up here, raised here, I love the people of Newport and Cock County. I've been serving the city for almost 20 years. With your vote of confidence, I've tried to serve you with the best of my ability. I felt like, as mayor, if there was something going on with the utilities, that I should have been notified, and I never If there was a problem, like, you know, I try to represent you all with morals and values the best I possibly can, and do what's best for this whole city, the whole community. We're all in this together, but I have to know what's going on, and if I'm not told, I can't get involved and try to help the situation. But I appreciate your support. I do. No more comments from citizens? That's, that was a charter change that was made to allow council members to serve on the fireboard.
Mr. Mayor, before you make the move to adjourn, can I ask one question?
Yes.
Again, everybody who is sitting on the NUB board that's in this audience, and for you three down there, I am asking you, please, please reconsider this, and let's do this again.
Just a couple of announcements before we adjourn. On a very positive note, Cock County and Cosby is graduating. The Senior Honors Night is Monday, the 19th at 7:00 at Lincoln Avenue Church. Sunday, May the 25th, Backler Art, 3:00 at the First Baptist Church. Thursday, May the 29th, and graduation, 5:00 starts at the Great Smoky Mountain Expo Center. I think Cock County graduates first, then at 8:00 Cosby, in that order. So, they, they would like that announced for everyone to attend. Relay for Life is having a celebrity waiter fundraiser. That's May the 17th, this Saturday at 6:00 PM, and I don't know if I'm a celebrity, but I am a waiter. And I have secured some people for my table, and found out today that it was okay for my wife to come and help me so that I don't mess it up. But what a great cause for Relay for Life. Yes, sir?
I'd also announce that I'll be a waiter as well. I tend to be there dressed in a tux, but I haven't been very fortunate getting people to come set my table. If anybody wants an invitation, they'd love to have me serve you during this wonderful event, I, I do have invitation to be like.
Well, chief, I'm wearing a tux too. Are you doing the bow tie or the necktie?
Well, I might wear my white field.
Let's try to dress alike. Okay. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Got a second? Anybody opposed? Thank y'all.